Just the three of us today. Steve's not gonna be here?
Steve, well, I don't know where Steve's at.
Where's Chuck? Chuck's not gonna be here.
I guess he'll be in. Chuck's not here. He's already to us. He wouldn't be here. Let's go ahead and start. The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on May 30, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. in Commissioners' Courtroom at County Administration Building, 200 South Tech 70, Suite 106. I don't think we're gonna be on Facebook today because Chuck said he wouldn't be in here, but first item on the agenda is invocation pledge of allegiance to U.S. Texas flag. And Mr. Auger, is that him? I see him coming down the hall. If he's not in, I'll... Huh? Okay. I'll lead those. Father, I want to thank you again for your love and your mercy. I want to thank you, Father, for all the blessings that we have that you've bestowed upon us by living in the country that we live in. Father, I pray that you'll be with our first responders, be in law enforcement, be with those who put their lives in danger for all of us. I ask, Father, if you'll give us wisdom this morning as we make decisions for the county and ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state under God, one and indivisible.
Second item on the agenda is called for citizens' input and our concerns. Lonny Masterson.
Good morning, Commissioners. I hope you all had a pleasant Memorial Day weekend. I just wanted to come and speak a little bit more about Veterans Treatment Court. And I know one of the options is, or one of the possible options could be to send veterans to another Veterans Treatment Court. And I just wanted to kind of speak on some of the concerns of that. I know Montgomery County Veterans Treatment Court, you are required to be gainfully employed or 100% VA disability. And they, at the very beginning, the first four months, you have to do at least two random drug tests a week. I don't know if it would be feasible for the veterans, if they were going to that court, to do it here, or if Montgomery County would require them to use their facilities. If they were required to use their facilities, that would be about four hours a day, twice a week at least, ate up just doing those random drug tests. And that would affect them being gainfully employed. Also, some of the other requirements for Veterans Treatment Court is that you go, at the very beginning, to counseling twice a week. The only counseling, when I went through Montgomery County Veterans Treatment Court that they had available nearby in Conroe area was faith-based. That wasn't for me. I'm more spiritual, and that just wasn't resonating with me at the time. I had to go all the way to Willowbrook to receive the counseling that I needed. So if we did send veterans to another Veterans Treatment Court, it would be a pretty big burden on them. They wouldn't most likely be able to honor the agreement with the court to be gainfully employed because they would most likely lose their jobs, having to commute twice a week randomly at the drop of a hat for a drug test, and then also do the counseling twice a week on the appointed days. That could be four days a week that they have to call out of work for some periods of hours. Another big thing with a lot of justice-involved veterans is that most of them are in dire financial situations. A lot of them don't have 100% VA disability. They're struggling with employment because their mental health impacts that. So with the rising gas prices and just the cost of living, them having to commute that far would be a severe financial burden on them and their family. It's just, it's really hard. I know when I was going, some of the classes I even had to take were three hours away from me. So I had to go on the other side of Houston to even be able to take some of the required classes. It's just, it's just really difficult to have veterans go to an outside Veteran Treatment Court for the services they need while still honoring the agreement that they signed for. I just wanted to make you all aware of this situation. I didn't know if you all were or were not. And thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Lonny.
My name is Gabriel Martel. I'm a United States Marine veteran applying for the VSO position. I understand what that role is up there. Like you discussed, some of the tasks that we have ahead of us in order to get this right, me and him have been talking for several weeks about things that need to be changed, that should have been changed in the past in that role. I'm 80% and went about the 80% on my own. Just wanted to show my face and introduce myself and hope to get that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriel.
Good morning. I'm Amy Cahill. I live on Greenleaf Lane. For the official minutes, I'm here to discuss the multiple locations of the end-of-maintenance sign that's on Greenleaf Lane. I was here two weeks ago as part of a request that the county take responsibility for their section of the Greenleaf Lane. Last time, you just got my husband, Brian, and this time you get me as well. One of the impressions that the county has tried to give to us is that they are doing things according to precedents and following procedure. However, I lived on Greenleaf Lane growing up. The history of Greenleaf seems to indicate somewhat to the opposite. The following information was gathered through open records requests of county road list and maintenance records. So I'm a homeschool mom, so we're going to have some visual aids as part of this presentation. First off, in May of 1988, the county accepted the roads in the Greenleaf, or in the Rustic Oaks subdivision at a Commissioner Court meeting. So that's kind of where the history starts. The county road list that next year shows the Rustic Oaks subdivision is totally 1.1 miles of road. When you compare this to the plat measurements, this reflects 10,069 feet on Greenleaf Lane, which includes the culvert crossing. So the county maintenance sign originally started right here on the road. Here we have, Greenleaf Lane is a little funny because there is a private part of that road. It starts right here and goes back toward the residence where most of us live. However, there is a public, there is a county section of the road on the other side. So if you measure from the corner, or from the property lines here to this survey state in the ground here, that's 10,069 feet. That's what's originally listed in the Commissioner Court acceptance of these roads. Now, there's, let's see, there's not much official records during that time. I guess it was just here. But, so in the 90s, we were able to track down about five of the original residents, and they reported the county maintenance sign was originally located here at 10,69, or feet. They also witnessed the county maintaining up to that sign, including fixing holes and dragging material on that culvert crossing in question on at least two occasions. Now, the, there's an undated road list that we were able to pull up. It also shows a .202 miles for Greenleaf, which covers this same 1,069 feet. We assume that it comes from this time period just due to the report format. It's not quite as updated looking as the next listing, which comes from 2001. So in 2001, the county road list in February 23 shows Greenleaf again at .202 miles or 1,069 feet, which again corresponds with the location of the sign. Then in 2001, the county road list from February 23 shows the same thing. Then we have a change. In 2005, the county road list shows Greenleaf Lane as only 1,042 feet, and listed as paved, even though the paved portion only comes to here at 669 feet. This has always been paved from the original acceptance, and that has never changed. So, but it still shows that the road, the county road list has been updated to where the sign and the sign moved at some point during that time to this side of the culvert crossing, which reflected the change in the feet measurement. There is no Commissioner Court meeting that, that approved any kind of change in the road system, just the road list shows it as that. So we're not sure exactly when that sign moved. Couldn't get a good date on that because there is no record, and the residents couldn't remember. And at that point, the county did no further work on the culvert. All right. Anyhow, appreciate you listening to me do it. The sign...
Thank you.
Moved, and then moved back and moved again. And so we're just kind of wondering if...
But your time's up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, talk about road guidelines. One of the reasons given for the county for not continuing maintenance on the platted and accepted portion of Greenleaf is that it is not built to county standards. Texas Transportation Code states that the Commissioners' Court of a county may make and enforce all necessary rules and orders for the construction and maintenance of county, of public roads. Brazos County has done this through the Brazos County subdivision regulations. It was approved in 1985 by the county. It contains a detailed list of construction standards for roads. These cover design, grading, drainage, base material, pavement, as well as maintenance bonds. There are multiple points in the process where the developers are required to get various pieces tested or approved by the county engineer. The regulations do not define a standard for gravel roads, which means paved roads are the only ones that would be up to standard. Over time, these guidelines have been updated and revised and are in use today. They're reflected in the subdivision regulations, as well as the BCS Unified Design Guidelines and the Brazos County Engineering Design Guidelines. But you still have those requirements for design, grading, drainage, base material, pavement, as well as the maintenance bonds. And so the section of Greenleaf in question is part of the Rustic Oaks subdivision. And so to look further at the situation, we'll look at the subdivision plat acceptance. And then from the Commissioners' Court minutes dated April 28, 1986, we have the following. The court next considered the approval of the final plat of Rustic Oaks subdivision in precinct three. It was three at the time. It's now precinct two. The county engineer recommended approval of the plat but noted the following conditions: and that first is low plasticity of base material and ditches and low CBR values; two, pavement will be subject to localized failures, that is potholes and washboarding; three, ditches will be, will be subject to erosion. County engineer recommended the county reserve the right to maintain the roads as gravel. Minutes from that meeting further show the Commissioners' Court approved the plat. Question I'd have the court consider is if this type of road would be accepted today, and also would it have been accepted if things were done correctly back in 1986, if it had been done correctly then. But regardless of the condition of the Rustic Oaks subdivision, because it was accepted in 86, it remains a county road to this day. However, the county is trying to maintain that part of Greenleaf that was accepted with the Rustic Oaks subdivision, I guess can now be dropped on the basis that it's not up to standard. But there's no talk of dropping the rest of Rustic Oaks, which is also not up to standard. One example of this would be in the spring of 2018, the culverts going under the road next to 228 Rustic Oaks Drive. That's towards the front of the subdivision. They collapsed after a heavy rain. County had to create a temporary road while they replaced the culverts in a section of road. So while these failed culverts and Rustic Oaks were addressed with county fines, the failing culverts on Greenleaf Lane are not addressed, even though both were part of the duly-platted and accepted, although substandard Rustic Oaks subdivision. To expand on that thought, let's look at a legal case regarding when a county accepts a dedicated road. Does it accept part or all of it? Hill Forest Manor Road, that is in the Maddox versus Grimes County Commissioners' Court, the following statement is made. Generally, the rule is that the opening up of a dedicated street for the greater part of its length by a municipality constitutes an acceptance of the whole of the street as dedicated in the absence of anything showing a contrary intent. This case was ruled in favor of Grimes County, and that road is, because the road is a county road. In the case of Greenleaf Lane, since no contrary intent was given in the county's acceptance back in 1986, their acceptance would include the entire length of the dedicated section of Greenleaf as defined in the plat. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Joe Hameter.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm with the Greenleaf Group. Basically, what I want to talk about is there's this idea that, you know, we weren't going to be, we weren't supposed to be given preferential treatment for maintenance on our portion of the road. And so there, there is some precedent that, as they've talked about previously, this portion of our road was maintained. I lived out in this, this property since about 2001 with my family, and since moved to Hawaii, now back in the motherland happily. I built a house out there now, but I've noticed it has not been maintained since then. So as far as the precedent goes, there, there are examples of other county roads in, in the Brazos County that previously, going back to the early 70s, were not maintained as county roads. And since the records don't go back further than five years, we can't really see some of what happened. But the, the bottom line is now they are being maintained by the county. And we're not sure if there's an official point or document that shows why they crossed over to being maintained by the county. Some examples, the Timbercrest subdivision, which is in precinct one, 1974, this is not being maintained by the county. And then if you fast forward up to somewhere around 2014 to 19, county work orders show that those roads are being maintained now. The Franklin Estates Flyaway Road, which is in precinct four, it's kind of the same thing, early 70s, not being maintained by the county. Now it's being maintained by the county. One other one, Old Macy Road, which is in precinct two, similar situation. At one point, it was not being maintained by the county, and now it is. So it's my understanding that basically, we, we just want to be treated fairly, and, you know, really our ultimate ask is that we have this bridge that keeps being eroded by the waters. When it floods, we've got a little stream that washes across. And so it's my understanding that basically, we just need the county to acknowledge that this portion of the road is under their jurisdiction for maintenance so that we can be assisted to apply for a grant. So thank you so much for your time.
Okay. Thank you. James Jones.
I'm also with the Greenleaf Group, and my question is about what is a county road versus a private road? And private road is what's in front of my house. I own the land that it's on, and that's, makes it a private road. County roads, though, have to be accepted, and there's two ways to be accepted. One is that this Commissioner Court can accept them officially. The other way is that they can be accepted by maintenance. That's an implied acceptance, which goes along with interpretation of the Texas Transportation Code, which has been tested through court. And it's been found that if the county maintains a road, then it becomes a county road. This was in the River Road Attorney General's opinion in 2003. It was never officially dedicated or accepted. It was open and used by the public. Both of those are true of Greenleaf. And the county maintained for a period of time and then gave notice that they were ceasing maintenance. But the county general's office said that the road had been dedicated by implication and was accepted by implication, and is now a county road. And the county may not permanently cease the maintenance without doing so formally, which includes a unanimous vote by this court, and giving a replacement road for any of them that they abandoned. I've been out there on Greenleaf Lane for 30 years, and this was maintained until recently when they moved the county signs, and they, they abandoned our road. And so they vacated it, which means to terminate the existence of the road by direct action. They discontinued it in that they discontinued all maintenance on the road. The Transportation Code gives two parameters for discontinuation. The Commissioners' Court of the county may not discontinue a public road until a new road is designated by the court as a replacement. This has not been done. And where the River Road was a very similar situation, and the state attorney general said that they had to continue to maintain that road. I don't know who gave authority to move that sign. That sign was moved, and they abandoned a huge portion of the road, and we have been maintaining it ever since. And we have need of EMS services because my father-in-law is 96, I'm 71, and we need to make sure that these roads are maintained so that we can get emergency care. What about fire trucks? If, if the road collapses and we can't get a fire truck to our houses? And it's a matter of whose responsibility it is? And the responsibility is, is the responsibility of whoever maintained that road. And this maintenance has been going on. I've been there 25 years. I've watched them come out there with the road grader. They hate it because it's a very small portion of the road that requires the maintainer to come out. They have to transport that out there, and so that they can grade that portion of the road because it's not paved. The rest of Greenleaf or the rest of Rustic Oaks is paved. And so they don't like doing it. But not liking it has nothing to do with the Texas code. I've been a remodeler for 30 years. I have to do everything that the code requires whenever I remodel a house. I have been fined $1,000 one time because I failed to do that. And so I have to comply with the code. I think that the Commissioners Courts have to comply, comply with the Texas Transportation Code as well. And the, the code says you may not abandon a road, and that's what happened. When you moved that sign all the way up to the pavement, you abandoned all the gravel portion of it. And that is not in compliance with the Texas code. So we're asking for appeal for you to correct this mistake.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ryan Van Gaten.
Good morning. I live on the end of Greenleaf Lane with my wife and six kids, and I think I've been there about 16 years. So I've seen a lot of the things that they've been talking about. So when brainstorming the issue of Greenleaf, we looked into the option of grants that could be used on the road. However, we ran into the issue that the ones we looked into, they needed two things. The grants were for use on public property, and the county would need to sponsor or initiate the grant request. With the county claiming that the whole Greenleaf Lane, or not the whole, but that section that we've been talking about was private, they would not coordinate with us to apply for any grants. When the county received the ARP funding, it had an option to be used for private projects. So even though we did not believe the road was private, we went ahead and put in a request for ARP funding. The request needed a dollar amount with it. We had heard a $1 million amount thrown around, and digging in, we found out why. The Greenleaf culverts are in a FEMA classified floodplain. In order to get an accurate estimate of costs, it would take an engineer doing a drainage analysis and designing a solution. It sounded like the engineering piece could be 10% of the cost of a project. So we sought out a rough estimate from an engineer and were given $700,000 as a number that would be good for the ARP funding request. This was caveated that if the box culverts were allowed, it could be cheaper, but it could also be more expensive. So here we are in an interesting position. The county claims the edge of Rustic Oaks subdivision is in the center of the creek, that disputed bridge and culvert section. This would put half the culvert crossing in public land and half on private land. The current Brazos County regulations for construction of driveways and easements states, quote, "The area between a private property line and the public," or "and the property line across the road is called the county right-of-way. Because the right-of-way is Brazos County property, a driveway, sidewalk, mailbox, or any other structure built or located within that right-of-way is a trespass and will require county permitting before beginning construction." So with at least half the culverts in county right-of-way, we would need to have an engineer plan that was approved by the county in order to repair them. So the residents are stuck in a catch-22 with the county claiming that this is a private road, while if we wanted to work with a construction firm to fix the culverts, it would need to get county approval and require a FEMA-compliant structure. So while we based on Dr. Lyles's analysis that we believe the entire culvert is in county land and is a county road for which they are responsible, we also realize with a simple acknowledgement of Dr. Lyles's work, which I think you're about to hear about, that the culverts are on public property would allow us to work with the county to apply for grants. And our Commissioner Chuck Condala has told us via email, he can assist with the grant process if the ownership is confirmed. And that's basically what we're asking, is for the recognition that this section of land is county property so that we can work with you guys and ladies to access grants to help fund it. Because I know the county doesn't want to spend that kind of money for that amount of people, and I understand that. But we're trying to work with you all on finding money and making it possible, making it safe. So thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you. Brian Cahill.
Good morning. My name's Brian Cahill. I'm also from Greenleaf. Two weeks ago, we presented a document containing the surveys of findings of Dr. Lyle. And my assumption is, based on lack of feedback we've gotten, that you guys are probably busy just like me, you haven't had time to review those. So I wanted to kind of just share some of those findings with you. I want to start with Dr. Lyles's credentials. He's a registered professional surveyor in Texas and in Georgia. He has a Bachelor of Science in Civil and Science Engineering, Master of Science Computer Science, Doctor of Philosophy and Geography, Social Professor of Practice at Texas A&amp;M University in Civil Environment Engineering and Geographic Engineering. He teaches surveyors, both continuing education and those who are learning the trade. And he also works for the State of Texas for ongoing education for additional surveyors. We're going to kind of look at what he shared. He, in order to come with his opinion, he looked at the Rustic Oaks plat, the Commissioners' Court minutes accepting the plat, and the Commissioners' Court minutes accepting the roads in the subdivision. He also looked at a warranty deed for an adjoining piece of property over here to see how it coordinates with what's shared on the plat. So he looked first at the Commissioners' Court minutes, and he said, "In my opinion, Brazos County accepted for maintenance the roads in the Rustic Oaks subdivision." And when looking at the subdivision, he said, "Rustic Oaks subdivision is defined by its parent tract exterior boundary and said final plaque of Rustic Oaks subdivision, where the interior tracks were simultaneously created, creating no junior senior rights between lots. The roads do have senior rights as they were dedicated and accepted by the county. The question of ownership of the southern boundary is clearly defined by meets and bounds description in the final plat of Rustic Oaks, but must yield to the movement of the natural boundary of separates Rustic Oaks subdivision and said 10.5 acre lot, except for those monument points that are set and defined." So the creek here, and the boundary moves with the creek. He said, "The final plat of Rustic Oaks subdivision further emphasized that a point at the end of Greenleaf Lane is a critical point for the parent exterior boundary of Rustic Oaks subdivision. Therefore, in my opinion, is the intent described in the final plat of the Rustic Oaks subdivision and described in the adjoining 10.5 acre tract to hold the set and found iron point as a boundary. I conducted a field survey on November 8, 2022, and found the iron pin set in Rustic Oaks subdivision. When compared to the other set and found boundaries monuments in said subdivision, it agreed well with the given measurements. Therefore, in my opinion, the iron pin set and found is a boundary to Rustic Oaks subdivision and the 10.5 acre tract to the south. And concludes the ownership of all roads and assets in the Rustic Oaks subdivision." And this is the opinion he found right here, and it is, basically, when I discussed it with him, he said, "Generally, center creek is a property line thing." He said, "But when you have a dedicated road, that overrules and has precedence over the center of creek in this, in this situation." And he said, "When you put a boundary monument on there that's specifically referenced in multiple documents, that is the, is the edge as opposed to center of creek." So he said, "The center of creek is the boundary coming up to here. It then leaves the creek bed, comes to the iron stake, goes back to the creek bed, and then again at the center of the creek." For his survey, he also located the iron pins went up the subdivision and compared those with the dimensions to that stake, and they match what is given on the plat. So what does this all tell us? So we've got some summary points. History shows dedication and acceptance in spite of deficiencies in Rustic Oaks. Legal opinions comparative roads uphold that. The Rustic Oaks subdivision was dedicated and accepted, and that there are other roads with less dedication and acceptance that the county still maintains. History shows the county discontinuing Rustic Oaks over time, and state law says this is not allowed. So where does that leave us? I think the big question is where is the edge? Dr. Lyle has conclusively said this is where he thinks the edge is. If the county is disputing that, we are asking for an official statement of somebody who's got similar credentials saying, "We're thinking it's somewhere else." But at the end of the day, we know budgets are tight. Can you guys work with us to acknowledge this is a county road? Can we get some grant money? Can we fix this? Because right now, the trash company has said they won't drive across it because they're afraid they're going to fall in again. Can a fire truck get across that? Can EMS get across it? Heavier vehicles than our cars, because right now we are just dumping...
Mr. Cahill, I was...
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. That's the last one that I have listed to speak.
Judge, do you have anything? We don't normally comment, but we're permitted to comment when it involves a factual situation. And in this situation, I feel, never done this before, but I feel compelled to speak. I know that the people of this community feel like the county has been working hard to keep from helping them, and that is actually wrong. When this first came back in my area, it was back in 2017, Commissioner Catalina called me and had a meeting with some folks about a drive. I'd never heard of Greenleaf Lane before then. He told me at the time that it was already been determined by the county that we could not help the folks on Greenleaf, but they were coming in to speak with us. So at the end of that meeting, instead of just assuming that Mr. Catalina was right, I and the other attorney that I worked with spent a good deal of time trying to figure out a way that we could do something about this road. Unfortunately, even with the information you've heard this morning, everything across the creek is private. The two pieces of property you meet... the creek is private, but two pieces of property immediately adjacent conveyed to the center of the creek. Best-case scenario for them is we still have a public right-of-way, not a road. We have a public right-of-way dedicated by the developer that gets you to the center of the creek. You're still, if you expend county money to improve the road from the end of the cul-de-sac, which is where the county accepted maintenance was to the end of the cul-de-sac, both of the county engineers I worked with while I've been here both agree on that. They've researched their records. The new county engineer went back and looked at all of that for me again and confirmed that regardless, everything across the creek is kind of is not, is private property. We all know it's well settled that we can't spend public money to improve private properties. But I want the folks out there to know that we have spent hours and hours and hours trying to figure out a way to help them, not trying to, we have never looked at this as how to stop and helping them. It's always been, how can we help them? And it's just not possible. It's a bad situation. We all agree on that, but we still have a problem. No matter what we do, if, once we go past the end of the cul-de-sac where the maintained road ends, once we go past that, whatever we do is to improve the value of public property across the creek. And it's not only illegal, it's a crime to use county resources on private property. And we hear about commissioners in other counties that pay private roads and end up in jail over it. It's a bad situation. We have bad situations like this all over the county. I think this is probably the most heart-wrenching because it involves a creek and the others down. But that, those culverts were put in by the developer. They washed out once time in the past. The developer put them back in the second time. I think there's a reference to the fact the creek moved a little bit, but the county has never installed or maintained those culverts. There's no record of that at all. Thank you.
Well, and another point of fact, if a county employee on a maintainer decided on their own because of, out of the goodness of their heart, that they were going to push rock, do something, it would have been an illegal act because that was not county maintained property. And so, I mean, I can tell you that this happened years ago while I was still a commissioner, and that employee, when a neighbor said, "Hey, will you fix my entrance into my driveway?" It was turned over to the district attorney. That employee was terminated and I believe prosecuted. So if somebody was actually doing some maintenance past where we should have been, it would have been an illegal act for them to do it. It was never accepted in by the county. So I mean, that's where we stand right now. Anyway, I appreciate y'all coming in and sharing with us, but we're still where we were, in my opinion. But thank you all. Consider and take action on Agenda Ibs 3 through 23. Number three is Proclamation 23 dash 024 declaring the month of June as Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Move of approval?
Second.
Motion made second. I guess...
We're getting the proclamation signed.
All right. Let me get up and, yep. Yeah, we'll come up and we'll, are y'all with that? Come on up.
Thank you.
Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas people who are elderly or who have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of Brazos County by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from the diverse backgrounds, and whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives, and whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country, and whereas Texas APS in-home caseworkers in Brazos County have investigated 601 entakes, of which 222 cases of abuse, neglect, and/or exploitation were confirmed against our elderly Texans or those with disabilities in 2022, whereas elder abuse is grossly underreported because the elderly have been, are being abused to find very, find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. And whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all incomes, of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are both in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods, in suburbia, and whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need, therefore be proclaimed that Brazos County Commissioners' Court declares the month of June 2023 as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Brazos County and urges all citizens to work together to help reduce and abuse, help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly and have disabilities. Be it therefore proclaimed, a copy of the proclamation has been made permanent part of the minutes of Brazos County Commissioners Court Wednesday, this day of 30th May 2023. Somebody want to speak?
Hi, I'm Markeisha Lamar. I'm the Adult Protective Services Supervisor here in the Bryan office. I have three of my staff. I have Nikki Parker, Shamika Pryor, and Tia Creeks. And we're just here to bring awareness to Adult Protective Services. A lot of people don't realize that this is a real thing. They know more about Child Protective Services. And so we, in our office, we cover 10 counties, and so we have Brazes, Grimes, Burleson, Washington, Leon Madison, Falls, Robertson, Lomstone, and Freestone. And so we basically investigate abuse, neglect, and exploitation for all of our elderly 65 and older, or 18 to 64 with some sort of substantial impairment or disability. And so that's what, people hear APS and they think that we come in and we want to take, you know, residents out of their homes, but we do what we can to keep them in the community, ensure their safety, and provide them with services. And so we're just here to shed light on our program and to bring awareness. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't we go up front and we'll take pictures?
Master and then...
Anybody else want to speak? We still need to vote, don't we? I think we still need to vote, don't we?
Yes.
Can y'all come down a little?
We haven't voted on this yet.
Okay.
Okay. Come down. I guess we...
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I don't think we take a vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. All right. Number four is a resolution authorizing the county judge to execute approval of the proposed Texas statewide opioid settlement agreement, including the Texas addendum.
Move of approval?
Second. Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number five is approval of the following job description...
Move of approval A. Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six is approval requested from Constable Precinct Three to apply for the safety grant.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seven is approval requested from Bryan College Station MPO to apply for Safe Streets for All Grant.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number six is approval requested from Constable Precinct Three to apply for the safety grant.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number seven is approval requested from Bryan College Station MPO to apply for Safe Streets for All Grant.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number eight is approval of Amendment Number One in the Mass Gathering Permit Application Language update were made to better reflect the current county procedures. The original application was approved in Commissioners Court on July 26, 2011.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number nine is approval of renewal notice for Contract North Point Suite Equivalent for June 1, 2023 through May 31, 2024.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 10 is approval of Deductive Change Order for CIP 22 dash 638 Peach Creek Cut Off Road Construction in the amount of $242,206.43 for the unused contingency and bid line items for this project. Move of approval?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 11 is approval of Contract Number Two to Contract 23 dash 011R Carpet Cleaning with ACC Texas Services for Additional Square Footage for the Service from Brazos County Jail Administration, Juvenile Detention Center, and Ag Extension.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 12 is approval of Renewal Bid Contract 23 dash 121R Hydromark Seating, County Right-of-Way, and with Britton Hydra Seating.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 13 is approval of Contract 23 dash 127 Sematery Slurry with Southern Cement Slurry LLC.
Move of approval? Second. Could you say that again?
No, I better not try that one again. My mouth's dry right now. I don't want to look like the Speaker of the House.
Good thought.
Whoa. Did we vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Do we vote on whether you sound like the Speaker? Is that what we're... Motion carries. Number 14 is renewal of Contract 24 dash 015R Grease Trap Pumping for Brazos County Jail, Juvenile Expo Brazos Center, and Liquid Environmental Solutions Texas LLC.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 15 is approval of the Final Plaid of Culture Business Park One, 23.388 acres, Moses A. Foster Survey, A16 City of Bryan ETJ, Brazos County, Texas, sites located in Precinct Two.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 16 is approval of Final Plaid of Becker Subdivision Block One, Lot One, being a 4.004 acre tract of land, Mary Lawrence Survey, Abstract 30, Brazos County, Texas, sites located in Precinct Two.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 17 is approval of Brazos County Cash Contribution to Brazos County Health District for the second and third quarter of FY 2022-23 in the amount of $119,507.25 per quarter for a total of $239,014.50. Move of approval?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 18 is tax refund application for the following...
Move of approval A and B. Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 19 is budget amendments. Budget Amendments FY 22-23 Budget Amendments, 34.01 through 34.04.
Move of approval? Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 20 is personnel change of status...
Move of approval A and B. Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. Number 21 is payment of claims. Claims to be paid by Brazos County, Claim Number 8122488 through Claim Number 8122603 and Claims Number 9007627 through Claim Number 90076279. Move of approval?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carries. We will skip down to number 24 and is acknowledgment of investment report for quarter ending 3/31/23. Number 25 is the acknowledgment of FY 22-23 Budget to Actuals as by fund as of May 24, 2023 and an acknowledgment of FY 22-23 Contingency Budget to Actuals as of May 24, 2023. 26 is acknowledgment of monthly reports submitted May 2023, including one amended report. And number 27 is juvenile director's report. Linda.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 42 juveniles in detention, 27 males, 15 females, and we have 26 on electronic monitors. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Number 28, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. 713 this morning, 609 men, 104 women. We have 63 on electronic monitoring.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. 29 is announcement of interest items in possible future agenda topics.
Judge, if I may, I wanted to, you know, the regular session of the 88th Legislature is now sin and die. There is a special session, and wanted to take an opportunity to thank our representatives, Kyle Cassell and John Rainey for working on our behalf, as well as our Senator Charles Schwertner. I was particularly pleased that House Bill Five got across the finish line because I think that's important for economic development, not just in Brazos County, but the state of Texas. One item of following things and working also with Kimberly is, is there were a whole lot of legislative issues that were about development in the ETJ, disannexation opportunities and things that were granted. So I think after the dust settles, I don't think that many of these things will be considered in the special session because they weren't on the governor's list, but they could work their way in there. But I do think that after we're finished, that we probably ought to take a look at our subdivision regulations because they haven't been updated for, I think, about seven years now.
I think 1997.
Yeah. Well, there was a 2013, I believe, is when the last one was, that was to honor 2012. But anyway, regardless, I think it makes sense for us to look at where the legislation has changed what our perspective needs to be and, you know, work with TAC or whatever, but I think we need to take a look at that because all across the state of Texas, that's getting to be more and more of a potential no man's land, for lack of a better explanation. And I think we need to be out there. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other announcement of interest items in possible future agenda topic? Hearing None, 30 is call for citizens' input and/or concerns? If it's the same subject we talked about, no. Hearing None, we will move back up and to, number 22 is convening an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.0, 74, to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of general measure of the exposition complex in Brazos Valley Fair. Certain Commissioners, Cheryl, Attorneys, HR...
Katie?
Certain Commissioners, Cheryl, Attorneys, H.R.
Katie, do you need Katie?
Yeah. Probably, that'd be fine. I think that's it. And the time is ten fifty.
We've got three here. We can go ahead, Mr.?
Okay, we're coming out of executive session. It's eleven o'clock. Next items to adjourn. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I'll pass by.